Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum, and if we could stand, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I wasn't there, so I can't comment too much, but I do think there's one change under the director's report. It talks about applic- applications, and I think it should be applicants, about the assistant position. Is there anything else anyone else has to make changes, additions, deletions?
No.
Okay, if there aren't, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Sure, I'll do it.
Holly, Holly, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. There's no public, public for public audience. Under communications, a few weeks ago, I got a letter and two books from a former resident of Simsbury. His name is Robert Penfield, and he's written two books, one, The Monsters That Never Die, which was about, I think that's fiction. But he also wrote a book, The Last Echoes From Down the Hole, Down in the Hole. And it was about the Little League season in 1955, where Simsbury came from behind. He used to be a reporter for the Farmington Valley Herald. He now lives in Maryland, but he sent us two books for the library collection. And another one is going to come out next year, which is about the first time Simsbury field hockey played in the state tournament when they were just starting it. So that should be interesting when that comes out. He sent a very nice letter. Does anyone else have any other communications? Lisa?
No.
Anybody else? Okay, Greg, I'll turn it over to you for your friends' report.
Thank you. First thing is, last Thursday, the Friends had their annual meeting. And I'm pleased to tell you that the current team will stay in place for the next fiscal year with no changes. The second thing is that Lisa's library support budget request was approved unanimously. That's $35,000, and she'll be able to carry over whatever unused portion from this past year due to COVID. You know, it's only right to allow that to go on. It is greatly helped by the fact that we're going to have the book sale. And again, I have to thank Lisa very, very much again for her support in getting this whole thing underway and helping us getting the book collection going on. It's really a big thing. You guys know that probably 75 to 80% of the money the Friends raise comes from this book sale. So it's really a big thing. The last thing I wanted to tell you, we started a week ago Friday, and a lot of books are coming in. And I'm involved with that completely, and we've been handing out the survey as well, especially on Saturday, when people came in with teenagers, helping them bring books in. I really am trying to get more young people to get a good cross-section of responses, but everybody's been really positive, and I keep handing out the link. So we'll continue to do that during the collection period. That's all I had, Marianne.
Greg, am I correct? I thought I saw that the date of the book sale is going to be September 26th and 27th?
I believe it's 25th and 26th. It's the last, it's the last weekend of September. We're somewhat beholden to sports scheduling, et cetera. On the other hand, if some of you remember, when we did it the weekend after Labor Day, sometimes it was incredibly hot and steamy. So I'm not opposed to having it a little bit later. Makes it a little more comfortable. I'm not sure yet whether we have to control how many people come in or not. We'll see as it goes on, whether we have to be judicious about that. But yes, it will be at the high school, and you know, we're moving towards that. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, no, I just was asking, they always need a lot of help that weekend. So if any of you are so inclined, please put it on your calendar to give the team a couple of hours. They usually need volunteers Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And it's a fun experience, just to work it. So I just want to make sure we, I hit the dates right.
Yes, thanks for that. All help is welcome, but also bring your gently-used books to come and see us in collection, because you know, we're going to be doing that all summer, Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday. Tuesday and Friday, it's 10 to 12, Saturday, 10 to 2, but actually, the last two Saturdays, we've been there a bit later. And I anticipate, since people have been holding stuff for two years, that will continue. That's okay. It's good.
A good problem to have.
Yes, more is better. Thank you.
I don't really have anything as far as a chair's report tonight. I think the things I would talk about fall under the other agenda items. But I would say, Lisa, my understanding is next July, for the July meeting, we'll be able to meet face-to-face in person.
That's my understanding, yes. We preserve the retag room, so we'll go back to our usual space.
Okay, that will be great. I'm going to turn the, it over to you, Lisa, for your director's report.
Sure, as always, I'll highlight some things, if that's okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you highlight that, especially the ARPA grant and funding, and then we can do motions later, I was there, when you finish.
Sure, that's fine. So I wanted to let you know that the building's boiler and control devices are in need of replacement, and that will total about $23,000. That will come from library year-end savings, we believe, at this point. And also, the number of visitors that we have since September has doubled, which I think is great. People are starting to come back. I think we talked about this last month, but the volunteers have actually returned back to the Borrowing and Technical Services Department. They put in about 46 hours last month, and they are thrilled to be back. And of course, we're thrilled to have them back. The head of Children's Services, Stephanie Prado, virtually visited all children in four of the five elementary schools to promote summer reading. And the Teen Services Library also visited virtually with the kids at Henry James to promote summer reading. So that's underway. Summer reading started this past week. We already had on Tuesday over 200 people signed up. And as Greg mentioned, the Friends have already started collecting for the book sale, and they will have exclusive use of the Tariffill Room through the end of September. And I was glad we were able to look that out. That's my director's report. Did you want me to go into the grant now?
Does anyone have any questions for Lisa about the director's report, as she's stated it, or any questions about the library as it is now? Okay, then, Lisa, why don't you go into the ARPA grant and funding?
Sure, through the American Rescue Plan Act, we were able to garner some funds that come from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, and then through the State Library. And of course, it's a grant process. So I've been working on the grant application with the leadership team at the library. And as you probably know, it was approved by the Board of Selectmen last week. And I sent you out the grant application, but to walk you through it, what we're applying for is a book bike that we can take around town. And one of the things that we really hope to do with it is take it to Tariffill, because we know from our prior strategic plan that Tariffill is underserved. And the second thing that we are hoping to get funding for is contactless pickup lockers that will be located in the lower-level courtyard. And what we found during the pandemic was that curbside service became very popular, and we are continuing that service, but this will expand the service 24/7, so people can pick up their material. And what we're hoping, we know that the demographic of 20 and 30-year-olds are underserved as well by the library, and we're hoping, because they'll have more flexibility to pick up material, that they'll be more apt to use the library. This grant does, the project actually does go over the budget allotted for Simsbury. Simsbury was allotted $19,401 by the federal government, and the project totals $33,883.07, and the $0.07 is due to shipping. That's part of the shipping charge for the bike, I believe. So what we will need is some of the library board reserve funds to cover the overage over the $19,000. Also, any installation costs are not covered under the grant, so the installation of the lockers would have had to come from another source anyway. So I think this is a good way to leverage grant funds to do something bigger that can really serve a need in the community.
So Lisa, is part of the grant process explaining that we do have funds to cover part of the installation and part of the product?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, you kind of have to, like, disclose all
Yes.
amounts, okay. That's fine, I just don't know that too much about it.
And just for the new members, when Lisa's talking about board funds, over the years, people have donated parts of their estate to the library. We've used estate funds which go into the board account, more like the teen space. We've used them for the maker space, various big projects that we wouldn't be able to get out of our budget as it is. So that's the account that Lisa's talking about. So are there any other questions or comments about either part of the grant?
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit. I thought of one more question to ask about the lockers when I was driving over here, and that's, for people that are returning books, that are coming to take out books, but have books to return also, would it be possible for them to leave it in the locker versus having to drive upstairs to drop them off?
I think we would prefer not, but that, I think, remains to be seen. And they don't have to drive all the way upstairs. Remember, we have that book return outside of the building.
Yes, yes.
So.
Okay. And my other comment is related to the bike. I, I've thought about it, I've discussed it with my wife back and forth, and to me, it's more of a short-term wowza item than something that will have a medium or long-term effect. And I'd much rather see that kind of money spent on maybe something different. You know, maybe creating a branch at Tariffill School or something else. I just feel like I cannot vote for, for the bike.
Can I speak to that for a minute? I think, I think, while you say it might be a short-term sort of project, there are libraries that have had book bikes now for the past 10 to 15 years, and it's actually a project that we started looking into way back in 2014. So the longevity is still there.
Yeah.
And I think if you look at Simsbury as a bike-friendly community and all of the trails that we have, it seems a perfect match.
I disagree. I, I think for an urban environment, a bike cart is great. I think Simsbury is so spread out, and the houses are so separated in most of the town, that I just don't see a value to it, so.
Well, I think, Lisa, but it would be used at special times and for special events. It's not as though someone's going to be riding the bike around every neighborhood. I just agree with Lisa, especially when we did the strategic plan five years ago. More people just felt that they couldn't get to the library from Tariffill. And I think we would all love to have, I, well, personally, I would love to see some type of permanent branch or whatever in Tariffill, but that's certainly not in the order of $5,000. And I think using the bike would not only facilitate Tariffill, it would enable us to have a larger presence, be it at something like Simsbury Celebrates, in any of the things, the Arts and Crafts, anything like that. So I think that's where it helps. I would say I would love to have a branch someday, or a, you know, bookmobile or whatever, but I think this is a wonderful step forward. Or even going to the different schools. Anybody, Amber? Amber?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
I was having microphone issues earlier. My question about the ARPA money, from what I looked at online, it seems like a lot of that money, since it's coming from the pandemic, has to do with, like, IT-type resources, and to kind of help people that have relied on libraries and schoolchildren and needing access to broadband and IT. And I know the book bike is going to be a Wi-Fi hotspot, but I also know that a lot of people in town were using the business resources part of the library to, you know, apply for jobs. And, and I guess what I'm asking is, do we feel like we have adequate resources there to provide those types of resources and the computers for people before we would invest in the bike? Even though the bike does have Wi-Fi. I just was wondering, like, now that our hours have opened, are you seeing that we feel like we have adequate resources there to address those concerns?
I feel like we have adequate IT resources in the Business and Career Center, yes. One of the projects that we are funding with year-end funds is beefing up the Wi-Fi on the front lawn, because the Wi-Fi in the parking lot is very good. The Wi-Fi on the front lawn is not. And of course, we'll be putting in the benches that we've discussed, so that will broaden the Wi-Fi outside the library building, which is available 24/7. I can also let you know that Sherm is looking into another grant that I think is coming through the FCC, that works with libraries to provide technology resources and internet access to families that may not have it, to facilitate remote learning. So he is looking into that right now.
Any other questions, comments? This is kind of a silly question, who's going to be riding the bike?
We have staff members that are interested in riding the bike.
Okay, that's cool. Can I ride it?
There's a line of people who want to ride that bike.
It will be an e-bike, too, so it will have assist. It won't, I mean, you won't have to use all of your human power to get it to go.
Oh, okay, cool.
I think one of the things that I want to stress about the e-bike, and libraries have been saying this for, my gosh, 20 years. One of the important things in, in reaching your community is to go out where they are. And that's what we tried to do in the prior strategic planning process, with focus groups throughout the community. And this book bike, I mean, obviously, it's kind of a neat thing, so it's a catchy thing, so people will find it interesting, gets us out into the community where people are on the trails, and give them sort of a taste of what library services are. We can issue library cards, so people that wouldn't necessarily have come into the library may discover us on the trail and then get a library card and use library resources. Because it being a Wi-Fi hotspot and having a tablet, we can demonstrate digital content. It'll also have material in, in the book bike trailer to borrow, should they want to borrow right there on the trail.
Anyone else have any questions, comments?
I just have one question, and that, that was one, my question was, how are you going to get the bike to Tariffill? It's more of a safety thought. There is no bike trail at the moment that goes over to Tariffill, so is it, are you able to fit that bike into a car, or would someone have to ride it there?
The plan is to ride it there, and Sherm has been investigating other ways to get to Tariffill, not on the actual road. And he bikes a lot all throughout the town, so he is investigating ways to do that.
Okay, I just would like, it was a safety thought, a safety issue.
And we discuss safety issues, and also, the town is looking into the liability, of course, with Karma as well.
Yeah.
We won't have anyone out on it until it's all sealed with insurance.
But it, but it is, it's not something you could put in the back of your car, if I
It is not, but the town, I'm going to throw this out, and Public Works will probably scream, but the town does have a trailer that we could load it on, should we want to take it on a trailer.
Okay, thank you, that, that addresses my concern, thanks.
Yes.
Anything else, questions, comments? Well, then, what I'd like to do is, I think I'd like to look for three motions. The first one, to support applying for the book bike under the ARPA plan. The second one, looking to support the curbside lockers as part of the ARPA grant. And the third one, giving permission to, and I think I need an exact amount, Lisa, or maybe not, we can do up to, use board funds to cover whatever the installation costs and any overage might be for the curbside lockers. Does that sound reasonable?
$18,000 more.
You think that's enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Our budget, Marianne, have that?
Excuse me, Tally?
Does, I'm sorry, does our budget have that? Like, does our, the library board funds? I actually don't know what those are.
No, the board funds, as I said, if people die and they leave us money, other people have just graced us. We had one lady, and it was really sad, because no one in the library had ever seen her, that left us almost $50,000 a few years ago. So it's in a separate fund. We've used it on occasion when there were budget constraints, say, you know, for training or going to conferences. That's not part of the budget project process at all. It's not part of our budget. So, do I have a
I move to support the purchase of the book bike, the bike book, whatever.
Yep. Any other comments, or that's a motion, do I have a second? Tally? Okay, any other discussion on the book bike? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Somewhere.
Okay, okay, the motion passes with Mark against. Second, can I have a motion to proceed and purchase the curbside lockers to continue curbside pickup, seven by 24?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Mark seconds. Any further discussion or questions?
Did you get an answer, Lisa, on road chemicals, or sidewalk chemicals?
Yes, Mark, I did get an answer on road chemicals, and I thought I would bring that up tonight, rather than emailing you, because I thought everyone would be interested in hearing it. What they recommend is that the lockers be hosed down or cleaned after chemicals are used around them. But again, they're underneath the courtyard, so there's not very many chemicals that are used right there, because ice doesn't build up there.
Great, great.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion or questions? All in favor of approving, approving the curbside lockers under the ARPA grant?
Aye.
Aye.
Any knows? The motion carries unanimously. And thirdly, do I have a motion to approve $15,000 from board funds to enable us to complete the curbside lockers for installation or whatever other cost might go above the grant?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Holly, second. Amber, thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the, then, I don't know, Kathleen, do you want to give a I know Heather's not here tonight. She sent me a brief summary of the status. I didn't know if you wanted to give it, and then I'll ask for the next motion. Maybe just do it a little, or I can go first.
I don't have a copy of it, so, well, why don't you go ahead and read it, and I may have some things to add.
Okay. Let me just, sorry. Oh dear, where'd that go now?
I'll just, while we're waiting, I'll just say that we're up to around 350 responses now, and that they, they keep coming in on a steady basis. You know, three, four, five per day. So, you know, I think that's pretty good. We still are looking, the responses are skewed a little older. I mean, in each age group, you have a little bit more response. So Heather and I have discussed holding some focus groups later in the summer that would focus on younger age group in particular, to try to beef up that response. And I just want to say, Greg, thank you for grabbing the 20 and teen somethings when they come in with the books. That will help us a lot.
I didn't grab them, I just gave them the paper.
I have also a teen advisory board meeting this week, so Mary will make certain that those teens complete the survey as well.
Yes.
Right. I'm sorry, I can read this, I think you've covered everything. Her update said, we currently have 300, she wrote this on June 16th. We currently have 342 responses, 334 being library users. We're looking to increase responses from the ages 40 and under and from non-patrons. Lauren Miller has agreed to put together our first draft once the committee has analyzed the results in September. Kathleen should be there to report on this, and you've covered all of that, Kathleen.
Okay.
So anything else that we can help you with at this point? Other than encouraging neighbors, et cetera, to respond?
That would be it, and I'd say, you know, it's very helpful that it's, it's featured on the library website. Every time I, and every email that's gone out from the, from the library has that. And that, that's helpful, because there are a lot of people that were all busy, and you know, you see it and say, I'll do that later. But you know, the more and more and more people see it, eventually, they're going to find a minute to fill it out. So, and those in-person, please, and the, and the little quarter-size flyers that we have put together that have been given out, that's helpful as well. So I, you know, I think we're pretty confident in trying to get a few more some input for the 40 and under with the focus groups, I think will round it out.
That's great. So that gets us to the other item for the draft funding. Lauren Miller has done a phenomenal job in writing grants for the board. She wrote the grant for the Tariffill Room, the, I always say it wrong, Mark, Pega?
Peg Pisha.
Peg Pisha grant, whenever we turn to her. Last year, she was a board member. Once we got all the ideas for the board, for what the plan would be, and we had run it by the board, she took everything and she wrote it in a draft. So it sounds like it's a uniform document, instead of assigning each item to a different person, which would have been very disjointed, and I think would take probably a lot more time to make it sound as one if we approached it that way. So the whole committee in the library board will have input on what the goals are. But the writing of that first draft, we would like Lauren to do. And I think at this time, she is no longer living in Simsbury, but that is her, that is her vocation, and she does this as a consultant. And I would like to propose a $500 stipend to ask her to have her do the draft of the strategic plan. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Do it.
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the funding of $500 from the board funds?
So move.
For funding, okay, moved by Mark.
A second.
Second by Holly. Any other questions?
I have a question, I'm looking it up, sorry. On the, on the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Yep.
I'm just trying to bring it up. Okay, I think I misread it, and now I'm looking at it. I thought it first said $5,000.
Oh, no.
I have these glasses. Okay, yes, all good.
Yeah.
I'll write the grant.
So would a lot of us. Okay, all
I have a, I, I'm sorry, I'd like to have some discussion.
Yep.
So, I mean, would we expect to, if we engage somebody locally to do this or brought somebody on to do this, is this typically what you would expect to pay? I mean, it just seems like we need to have a plan for how to deal with grant writing going forward. I realize Lauren moving is a big loss for our board, but it seems like we can't keep relying on her being able to fill this role when she's living out of state, and
I don't, I don't think we intended to be that. I don't, I don't think we intended to be that. It's just that she was a member as we started it and carrying it over and having the experience of doing this. You know, I, I don't see, I mean, Lisa's the one that wrote the grants for the ARPA. And it might be other staff members or other board members. Mark certainly has had parts too. But I, I think it was certainly my feeling that she's probably the best one to be able to do it and do it in a manner that it reads as one.
So just to make sure I understand, like, like, part of what she's done is write grants for the board in the past, but that's not really what we're talking about now, right? Because we're talking about paying her to draft the strategic plan, right?
To draft the verbiage of the strategic plan. The strategic plan and the items and the goals and the aims will be identified by the group, by the community.
But I mean, we really don't think we have anybody on the strategic planning committee that can do that.
Amber, she did write the strategic plan five years ago.
Right, but...
Okay, I just want to make sure you knew that she did the last one.
No, I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is, we, I mean, would we, did we pay her five years ago to do that?
She was on the board, so we couldn't.
Okay.
Couldn't not pay a board member.
Okay, and she, and I guess what I'm saying is, we really don't think we can do this any other way. This year, like, I, I, I don't know, I'm just surprised that we don't think we have the resources to write the strategic plan ourselves, but...
I'm not saying I don't think that we don't have the resources, I think she's probably the best resource.
It's just, what's different is that we can pay her now because she's not a board member?
Yes. And to be honest, a lot of libraries pay a consultant to do the whole thing.
Probably for a lot more money, right?
For thousands, and we have not done that, we didn't do it five years ago. I don't think we've ever done it. But it just seems that this might be appropriate, especially because we got a later start because of COVID and all that, to be able to get it done in a very timely manner. Because she's been through the process before. And I, you know, I just, I think it would be fair to offer a tour, but it's a board decision.
I just, could I, can I speak to, I just, I feel comfortable with Lauren's background and experience and familiarity, not only with the community, but with the board and with our goals. And, you know, if, to reach out and bring someone new in, you know, there would be that learning curve there, and we are under somewhat of a time constraint. So I think Lauren's a great resource. And I, I'm willing to, you know, give her that stipend, I mean, she's definitely going to work for it.
And she did not come up with it. I, I approached her and asked her, since she was leaving, if she would consider it and if we paid the stipend, she did not ask. This is, I think that it's a fair thing to do, but that's got to be a decision by the board. Holly?
Oh, go ahead, Tali.
Um, I was, go ahead, pick one.
Holly, go on.
I, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm in support to doing that because I think she brings the experience and she also brings that one voice and ties it together. And do I think any of it, I, I know I can't do it. Even if I had all the time in the world, I would not be able to produce the document in the way that there's, I, I know I don't have that skill set. And for her having gone through it, I feel like there's a familiarity and there's a language flow she already understands. So I, I do support for her to do that.
Holly? Yeah, no, I just, I echo the support too. I, I think going forward, we know that we may not have that in the future, but, you know, don't give up that opportunity on this round and honor her professional abilities to, to make a really good strategic report.
Other comments? Can I, do I have a motion to?
I just, I actually just wanted to address, Amber, you know, I do appreciate the looking, you know, the critical eye of looking at, is this really necessary? Is, are there other ways to do it? So I, I appreciate that, that critical eye about going, is this the value? So thank you for bringing that up.
Right, and certainly, this is not at all, my concern mostly is that Lauren is a resource that is not, she's not physically here, and as you kind of look forward, it seems like this is somebody who's been very critical and has contributed a lot and that we need to fill that hole. And I think that we can, can do this now, and she can help us with this now. But if we feel like we don't have the time or the resources to, you know, we, we need to have a plan going forward, is all I'm trying to say. And, and if she's been such a huge valuable resource, then we need to be thinking about that as we bring people in to the next strategic plan and, and grant writing going forward because our ability to continue to rely on her might be limited.
Right, and this is not intended to go beyond this. This is a one-time thing. Lisa, do you have any other comments or comments?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I just want to say that, Amber, you're making a very good point, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
And I agree, I agree, Amber, totally. So do I have a motion to allow spending up to $500 to develop the draft of the strategic plan from board funds?
Didn't I make that?
I think, yeah, we have the motion already.
That's true, okay, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion's unanimously passed.
Mary Ann, I just realized that budget is not on the agenda.
You're right, but I think it was because you said that the dollars weren't available, right? Because of the transition from the...
I, I sent out the, the new report through Munis, so you have the May finance report.
Okay.
And it, I mean, we're, we're in good shape to end the year and we were able to get a large number of projects done with year-end savings as well as replace the boiler and the controller, so.
Is there anything in there, Lisa, that you need a motion for? Because then we could go, we can go back and add an agenda item if need be.
We do not, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Munis report did come out.
Right, okay, good. That's all I have, is there anything else that anyone wants to talk about or to bring up to put on a future meeting? Otherwise, hopefully, I will look forward to seeing all of you in July in the Weetog Room.
I will be here, so you know I will be in town on that night.
Okay, yeah, and that, should be, if you, if any of you aren't going to be able to make the meeting one way or the other, and I know there's going to be a hybrid, if you could just let us know, because if we don't have a forum, we would, I would prefer canceling it before someone else gives up plans because of the meeting. So, okay, so Polly, you won't be there.
Right.
That's good. Okay, thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Night, everyone.